Ms. Rubin, are you ready? Hey, good evening. I want to thank everybody for coming to the Monday, October 20th council meeting. Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Here.
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 Thank you. If everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we do not have any minutes for this meeting, so we will be approving those at the next meeting. Are there any additions or removals from the agenda? Okay, seeing as there are none, are there any comments from the audience? If anyone has a comment, if you could please state your name and address, and limited to five minutes.
Rachel Gross, 3845 Northwood Road. I have written and rewritten these remarks countless times since the Vice Mayor announced her mayoral campaign. I feel very confident she is not the right fit to serve our humble little community as mayor. Recently, she has addressed comments calling her MAGA because she voted for Donald Trump three times. What even is MAGA anyways? To me, MAGA is white supremacy, Christian nationalism, anti-immigrant, homophobia. MAGA is the riots in Charlottesville, Virginia, where Trump supporters were chanting, "Jews will not replace us, Jews will not replace us," while waving swastikas proudly. MAGA is the insurrection of January 6th, 2021, when Trump was unwilling to accept the results of the election, resulting in the destruction of our nation's Capitol Building, while Trump supporters were chanting, "Hang Mike Pence, hang Mike Pence." MAGA is the absolute antithesis of everything being Jewish means to me. Michelle, to be fair, I actually agree with you. I do not believe you are any of these things. I do not believe you are MAGA. But I do wonder why, if you are not MAGA, why don't we hear you speak out against the egregious behavior of the current president? Over and over again, your supporters say your vote on a national level does not matter at the city level. I wholeheartedly disagree. I don't claim to be a scholar of the law, or legal systems, or the government. But one thing I learned at a very young age is that if we are unhappy with the top, change starts at the bottom. The best way to be heard and make change is to start with the localist of politicians. Your constituents are affected every single day because of policies Trump and the Republicans are implementing. I'd like to remind the community of your refusal to endorse Issue 1 in 2023. In a discussion online, I challenged you and your defense on this topic. Your reason for not openly supporting women's healthcare was that you may support it under certain circumstances, but only after a discussion with and approval from your rabbi. Fine, I can respect your religious needs to have this discussion with your religious leaders. However, it was mind-blowing to me that you didn't understand that in order to discuss a potential abortion with your rabbi, it must be legal to get one. Therefore, you should have been an emphatic, absolute, full-stop endorser of the issue. Had Issue 1 failed, and someone in your family needed an abortion, it wouldn't matter that the rabbi gave you his blessing, because the doctors would have been jailed for issuing your family member basic healthcare. This made me realize that you truly have very little understanding of the implications of elections on these types of restrictions the Republican-controlled State House attempt to make on a daily basis. I recall reading a comment online that you believe University Heights lacks preparedness for severe weather events, yet you support a president and administration that is actively cutting funding to weather research via NOAA. That certainly won't help our ability to prepare for severe weather events in the future. At the League of Women Voters Forum, you spoke to the importance of reunifying University Heights. Respectfully, that is laughable when you openly support the most divisive president in modern history, not once, not twice, but three times. You were also asked, "How will you protect transgender residents of University Heights?" In theory, your response was great. You said, and I quote, "When I'm mayor, I'm mayor for everyone. It doesn't matter what your beliefs are and what you identify yourself as. That has to be protected, period, full stop." This is another perfect example of why your vote on a national level matters. You repeatedly and openly support a national party that puts the lives of our transgender residents at risk every single day. When asked what other steps you will take to implement the UH Climate Action Plan, you claim to recognize the importance of this, acknowledging the need to lower emissions, yet you vote for a president and administration who deny climate change every single day. You can support his support for Israel, and also criticize his destruction of democracy, yet I haven't read or heard you speak out against any of these things. To be fair, we haven't had any one-on-one discussions, so I do not know where you stand on cuts to Medicaid, cuts to SNAP, or cuts to special education, where you stand on the zip-tying and deporting of immigrant children. But all of these directly violate the Halakhot, so I think it's safe to say you must not support them. So while I do not believe you are MAGA, I do believe you are a single-issue voter. You look past or ignored all of these horrific characteristics of the current Republican Party in the name of what you thought was best for Israel at the cost of democracy here at home in the United States. I have friends that voted the same on a single issue: Israel. Entitled to be an Issue 1 voter? Sure. Something I would do? No. Why not? Because that is an incredibly narrow-minded way of thinking. The difference between my friends and the Vice Mayor? None of them are in public office. None of them are running for mayor. University Heights deserves more than a narrow-minded mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Could please state your name and address?
Hi, my name is Sephora Sunnenshine. I live at 2525 Claver Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've lived on Claver Road for the past 12 years, near the John Carroll University baseball and football stadiums. I support student athletics and use of the facilities. However, the noise from the stadiums has recently become excessive. On Friday nights, music and games often continue past 11:00 p.m. Marching bands, amplified music, and loudspeakers carry several blocks, disrupting family time, disturbing sleeping children, and affecting neighborhood peacefulness. I respectfully ask that, one, the university stop renting or allowing high schools and outside groups to use the fields, as the frequency of games now significantly impacts the residents. And number two, during practices on the baseball and football stadiums, to please stop playing music or running the radio over the loudspeakers in a way that carries several blocks into the residential area. Under University Heights Code of Ordinances, Section 648.13, unreasonable loud, disturbing noises are prohibited. I believe the current noise level meets this definition. Thank you for your time and consideration. I hope we can find a balance between the university's athletic programs and the residents' right to a quiet, peaceful neighborhood and home. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the audience? Okay, seeing as there is none, does anyone have any reports or communications from the mayor? Okay, thank you, Ms. Rubin. In the interest of time, since this is a very short agenda, there is no communication from City Council as well. We are now up to, just before I go on, are there any council members that would like to say something? Okay, we are now up to the reports and communications from Directors, Department of Finance.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just wanted to give an update. I had mentioned briefly that we were waiting for our healthcare renewal. I had the meeting last week, and our current provider came back a little bit higher than we were expecting. We did get one competitive offer with another carrier. Our brokers are going back to them currently, and I should know this week what their best and final will be, and then I can present that to Council.
Okay, great. So at the next meeting, the healthcare renewal will be there?
Hopefully, yes. And then also, I just passed out what would be an exhibit for the budget, and know that it is on for a reading. That does not, I realized that it was more than likely going to be a temporary budget, but we went through this exercise and prepared it. And we'll go.
So, thank you, Ms. Akonis. Actually, it was taken off the agenda because we did not have any backup information.
Nobody told me that.
Okay, I would appreciate also, first of all, thank you for getting this. I know you had some computer issues the last couple days. For the next meeting, if there could be like a cover page with notes on what the mayor's priorities are, so we can have an understanding when we're going through this. And then also, if we can have a full line-by-line budget as well.
Yes, I have all of that prepared. I was just running out of time, and I wanted to clean up before I sent it out to everybody to review. But there is a line-by-line detail. I do have some of the highlights that are in the budget, but it was not on. We'll just wait until the next meeting.
Thank you. In addition to that, it'd be helpful to see the revenue side, so we know where, how red we are. See, 27 million. I can already picture we're in the red. And then also see the 2025 budget and the 2025 actual, so we could see a side-by-side where 26 compares to 25.
I do have all of that. I was just a little, I just was a little unsure about this process and what I was doing. I don't know. So, next meeting, you'll have everything, and it already goes.
Okay, thank you. And we do have a Finance Committee meeting on the 28th, so if we can have that quarterly update, that will still be.
Quarterly update, but no budget discussion?
I mean, we don't, it's not on the agenda that, so we can talk afterwards also.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Weiser?
Definitely before the next meeting, so we have enough time to really go through it before it appears formally on the agenda. It would be appreciated. Thank you.
Will there be a meeting when we all go through it together?
Yeah, there will be, but.
There will be, okay.
Yeah, but this is intervention.
Yeah, so what we've done in the past is the mayor would give us a draft budget. There would be a cover sheet with priorities, full revenue, full expense, last year versus this year, percentage over or under. And then what would happen is it would get referred to committee.
Got it.
And then the directors with you in attendance would be going through what they have entered in the budget and why, so we could get a full understanding of what's needed. And that takes either one or two meetings. And then it comes, you know, into the Finance Committee for discussion in one or two meetings before it gets passed.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, Director of Law?
Just briefly, Vice Mayor, the mayor asked me to make a clarification from the last meeting regarding the Washington Trail Project. Ms. Weiser mentioned that she did send me some documents and asked me to determine whether the mayor committed illegal acts. Ms. Weiser did not say the mayor committed any illegal acts. She went through the process of the mayor's actions with respect to that project. And I never said he committed any illegal acts, but Ms. Weiser went through a lengthy process of how the grant was, the city received the grant, the grant acceptance of the grant a couple years ago by the mayor and council's non-involvement. But we just want to clarify that he didn't want an implication out of there that he did anything illegal, so.
Thank you for clarifying that. Are there any questions for the Law Director? Okay, safety. I see that the fire chief is here. Great, thank you. Are there any questions for the fire chief?
It would be nice if we get it before the meeting, like maybe a day before, so we can actually read through and chief, rather than in our email while we're sort of sitting at a meeting, or just before.
The previous month, so try to get it by the second Monday.
That would be very nice. Yeah, that way, if there's a question, we get to ask you when you're up here, and that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I see that the police chief is not here. Is there any report from him? Okay, seeing as there is not. Service Department, Mr. Pennington? Okay, so that's Minutemen that you're talking about, the five-part time. And then, so currently, the Service Department is collecting Monday through Friday? Are there any questions for the Service Departments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Pennington. Building.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a brief report this evening in regards to the complaints we've been receiving about the noise around John Carroll University. I have been discussing, you know, in conversation with that administration. And they have, so first, I'd like to address the music. The music has been by the school administration. It's not allowed. So anytime that a resident hears loud music, they let us know. We'll let them know, they're campus police, and there is no loud music during practices that is allowed. They also restricted any activity around the ball fields prior to 9:00 a.m., and that was enacted last week. Going out to their administration this week. So again, anytime we hear noise early in the morning, a phone call to either our Police Department or Campus Police should record it, you know, and then we'll address it. So there is the, I just wanted to make sure that you guys are, you know, aware of this movement, you know, towards neighborhood, being a nice neighbor with the college, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bartley. I can tell you, I actually wish that the people that left were here, because one of the people that were here texted me this morning with a video that there was a soccer team at 7:30 in the morning. So, I'll report it now.
Yeah, exactly. Get the complaint, get it into me. I'll reach out to them, or like I said, through our Police Department, their Police Department, like their administration. Like I said, they're trying to make that new policy of 9:00 a.m. this week, so.
Okay, great.
Might not have been this morning, but that's movement towards, like I said, something good.
Has something been said about the 11 o'clock bans at night?
Nothing like that, yet.
I think that's also something that might need a little bit of cleanup.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bartley. Housing and Community Development.
I just wanted to address the number of complaints that we received in regards to rodents, to let everyone know that I have been in communication with the Health Department. And his feedback was that residents are refusing for him to treat the problem. And so we're trying to come to some type of solution. But other than that, there's not much that he can do if they're refusing to treat. In addition to, we're receiving a lot of complaints in regards to the forms, so I'm also working on revising the forms that we're sending out so they're a little bit more clear.
Ms. Davis, why are they refusing the treatments?
That part I don't know.
Okay, is it because they're concerned that, I know there's some concern about the use of some poisons, where another animal then ends up biting the dead animal, and you end up with a dead other animal that you weren't trying to kill?
Right.
Is that part of?
All I can do is ask of the total number that's refusing and why they're refusing, if they're giving him that.
Is it significant, the numbers that are just saying they don't?
Correct. So he's going out assessing, and then they're refusing the treatment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Davis, can I ask you one quick question? I mean, I guess maybe this is for the Law Director, too. I mean, rodents are a public health hazard, I would assume. That's why the Health Department comes out right away. Is there anything legally that we can enforce to make sure that the residents allow traps or something on their property?
I don't think so. No.
But a neighbor can call and then get on their property?
Okay. They should be doing something themselves to alleviate the problem that they're refusing. Or if they're doing something that's contributing to rodents being on the, doing something we can.
Ms. Ex, would you have a question? Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Davis. City Engineer.
Good evening. Just an update on the streets. They are working. They were out there today. They plan to be weather permitting all week. They know their deadline. They're hoping to finish by Thanksgiving. So that would be a couple, a little over a week early. So I just, I can't control when they are there and when they're not there, you know. I can't control their schedule, but they are working. They're slowly working their way through the streets.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser.
I just have to ask this question. The asphalt plants close down in December or November?
Well, it depends on the weather. Last year, they closed down in December.
Oh, good.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Mockbee. Is there any report from Communications or Civic Engagement? Hey, Economic Development? We are now up to the agenda. Letter A, Motion to Authorize the Mayor to Accept Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Safety Intervention Grant for the Fire Department. Chief Percol?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The Bureau of Workers' Comp Grant, Safety Intervention Grant, is something that the Fire Department identified that would be a critical need to reduce injury claims and promote safety and wellness in the Fire Department back originally in 2013. We were successful in that grant application in 2013, 2014, and then again in 2019 and 2020. The first time that we had written a grant, it was for the same piece of equipment. It was for a patient cot and loading system that uses hydraulics and battery power to assist in the lifting and loading. That cot and load system originally was purchased with the older of the two ambulances we currently own, which that ambulance is set to be replaced hopefully later this year when we take ownership of the one that we ordered back in 2023. So we're trying to be proactive and apply for this grant again, so that the new ambulance will be fully outfitted as we originally budgeted for with this new cot and loading technology. We applied for the grant at a total package of $66,545.45. We received the maximum award from the BWC for $40,000, and the city will owe the balance of $26,545.45, which includes the three-to-one matching funds. I recommend that we move forward and accept this grant and make the purchases of the cot and loading system for the new ambulance.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to mention that this is a great grant. I actually apply for this grant annually from the school that I work at. There's also a $15,000 annual grant. I'm not sure if you're aware of, so that can be used separately from this as well. Yeah, but this is a great use of it. Are there any questions for the chief? Ms. Weiser?
So the $26,000 is currently not budgeted. That would be an additional appropriation, correct?
It's currently already encumbered for the new ambulance.
It is encumbered. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Agenda Letter B, Motion Toward the 25-26 Citywide Fall Tree Planting Project to Johnson's Landscaping. Mr. Pennington?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. This is our annual citywide fall and spring tree planting project. Bids were open this past Wednesday, the 15th of October. We did have one bidder for the tree planting, which was Johnson's Landscaping Incorporated of Mentor, Ohio, in the amount of $53,595.90. I am familiar with Johnson's Landscaping. I do know they do good work, and I would recommend award of the project to them for the planting of 155 trees to be completed by May of 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Is it unusual to only get one bid?
It's not necessarily unusual. At this time, we had one bidder come in on it. Their prices are reasonable, at I believe, right around $325 per tree, $339 per tree. That's within a, what I would expect to see in the pricing. So having the one bidder was not a cause of concern.
Okay, are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Rubin, will you call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Thank you. And Agenda Letter C, Motion Toward 25-26 Tree Pruning and Removal Project to Park Trees Incorporated.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Again, this is a, one of our annual, this is a tree pruning and removal contract. We did have two bidders for this, Parks Tree Incorporated and Hillshire Clark Electric Company. There are a total of 39 trees being removed, as well as pruning and trimming of numerous other trees, with work scheduled to be completed by March of 2026. Parks Tree was the low bidder at $79,497.0. And again, as they have done the program the last two years, I would recommend award of this contract to them. In addition, just for clarification on this, as well as the last item, we do have in the contracts for them to provide notification to residents where trees are being removed or trees are being planted at least a week in advance of that work occurring.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to actually ask that. Is there any room in here if somebody wants a tree that is maybe not on this list?
Are you talking about for, this is a pruning and removal. The last one was the planting.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
But in regards to that, we would have to issue a change order to do anything at this time.
Mr. Rock?
Yeah, I was looking at trees that are going to be removed, and I saw there were so many on Warrensville Center Road, which had me concerned, since there's not a lot of trees there to begin with. You could elaborate. What's causing those trees to be called for removal? Is it damage from the salt, the elements, I mean, but, I saw they were ash trees, and is that because of the, is there a disease? And how can we? And how can we prevent large amounts of trees being removed from that street in the future when there's just very few trees to begin with?
Actually, for the removal on Warrensville, I'm not seeing removal. What I'm seeing is trimming and, and, and training of the, the raising of the lower branches.
Well, you got Nixon remove. Take a look.
I saw that.
Page six, on page six.
Okay, let me go to page six.
Go to page six, there's two, four, five addresses listed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at Washington in the second line there. I do apologize. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I'm seeing, okay, Warrensville Center there. Okay, those are being removed, and they are ashes. I have a feeling it has something to do with their, their condition. The Arborists made the determination of their health and viability and thus determined those trees did need to be removed.
And so the ash tree is problematic, we're saying.
Yes.
And that's not part of our tree planting program, that particular species?
I don't think we're using that species anymore. We may do some other ash, but I don't believe we're doing any of that particular species.
It's the ash bore that.
Right, right.
Is an invasive species, has been doing a number on ash trees for a number of years. It has come through northeast Ohio. And a lot of the ash trees that we've had have had it come down. Even if they're on private property, it's just the bugs get them.
Actually, we're not even planting any ash, any longer, so.
I wouldn't, because it's.
Of all our planting that we're doing, none of those are ash.
Problematic.
So these, these are trees that have to come down. Again, in next year's program, we would plan on planting trees to replace those.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion? I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, Ms. Rubin, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Bryan, is there, do we need a motion to enter executive session?
We do not.
Hey, we're now up to reports of CNN Committees, Building and Housing.
Building and Housing, that tonight, we, the law director will be preparing the ordinance. We made some changes that would provide us a higher ceiling for the application for the exterior housing grant. What we have found over the years, that very few people have applied for it, and a number of people who applied for it have not qualified for it. This is to open up the requirements, so that more people can take advantage of the grant. The second thing that we talked about and we moved further on was beginning to move to a program that would allow us to do a, take the results of the exterior inspection for lifting that is sidewalk blocks that are lifted caused to, caused by city root trees, the roots of city trees, and get a, go out for bids and get a price for the bulk of them, and then offer to the residents that reduced price for re-leveling of the trees. There are still some issues we're talking about with that. Who would determine the, the cutting of the roots that are raising it? Will the cutting of the roots cause an issue with the tree, which would eventually kill the tree? And how we would handle it, how much the city could actually pay towards that? But we think by trying to get a contractor to quote the bulk of it all at once, it would allow us to then end up with a lower price for leveling than residents are currently having to deal with. And we did not get to our last agenda item, which then is going to be dealing with sidewalk blocks that need to be replaced because they're cracked, to see if we can do something that would assist homeowners in getting the price on those down as well.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. Community Outreach, Mr. King?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So the day after our last council meeting, I was here with Starfish to install a third camera. That installation went well. This evening, I've been looking at the, the video a little bit. There have been some improvements, but there are also some continuing issues with tracking. I'm going to ask Starfish to review the video and, and see if they can provide any, any, any feedback on, on how to improve that. That's it for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development?
Yes, we had a meeting last week, October 13th, and really it was to discuss the feedback that we had received from the mayor's town hall, which he had conducted on September 30th. So we went through all the comments and discussed collectively how we want to approach that. We will be meeting November 10th, and that will begin our discussions on the next zoning draft, which is the September 4th draft. I will look at, I'll try to create an agenda of what I think we can accomplish in two hours, and I'll, I'll get that sent out soon. So we have some time to read up on which sections we'll discuss.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Okay, Finance, as I mentioned before, we do have a finance meeting on October 28th. Ms. Mackey will be going over the street programs. We'll be ready for the budget discussion on that, as well as Ms. Ikakis will be discussing the quarterly financial statements. Recreation?
Thank you. The next Recreation Committee meeting is October 29th. Council's been emailed an agenda, which will most likely include items to be considered for the 2026 budget.
Thank you. And Safety?
No report, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And Service and Utilities?
Thank you. Two things. First of all, there's a joint committee meeting, Service and Utilities with Building and Housing, this Thursday, October 23rd at 6:00 p.m. We're at the tail end of weeds. So that's what we look forward to discussing. And just, there's a housekeeping issue on this, tonight's agenda, Roberta. It says Teresa Marshall is on the Service and Utilities Committee, but it's really win-wiser. Okay, thank you for making that correction.
Hey, thank you. And Committee of the Whole, there is no report, any reports of special committees? I could tell you there is a CIC meeting that is, I believe it's tomorrow. So that is a special committee. And is there any unfinished or miscellaneous business? There a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. King. Ms. Rubin, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Hey, thank you. Thank you for coming.